Good evening and welcome to the December 21st, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Mayor and City Council. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite Alonzo Carrasco from our Youth Center to come up to the podium and lead us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alonzo. Next is our reflection, and for tonight's reflection, I'd like to send thoughts and prayers to two members of the extended Gaithersburg family. Brianna Marie I, the stepdaughter of Guy Goodenough, from our IT department, was in a horrible and ultimately fatal car accident earlier in the month. She was just 21 years old, which is absolutely a tragic situation. And Brian Kildee, a longtime community activist and husband of former City Council member Dolly Kildee, passed away last week. We send our fond condolences to both families, and I'd like to dedicate our moment of silence this evening to the memories of Brian and Brianna. Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes, and tonight we have two sets of minutes, the first being the regular session held October 19th, 2015. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstent.
Okay, we have, that carries three, zero, with one abstention. And next, we have minutes from the work session held on November 30th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve the minutes from November 30th.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. So that carries three, zero, with one abstention from Henry. Next, we have our consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move for approval at consent, aye.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four, zero. Next, we have appointments, and tonight we have several appointments, I believe. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the resolution of the council confirming your appointments and reappointments to the Educational Enrichment Committee, a two-year term for Stacy Simon, her term to expire November 2017, to the Multicultural Affairs Committee, a two-year term, Valerie Palmer, term to expire November 2017, reappointments to the Animal Control Board, Mayor Joe LaFrance, term to expire, it's a three-year term, term to expire November 2018, to the Commission on Land and Art Tenant Affairs, a three-year term to David Mite, a term to expire November 2018, to the Educational Enrichment Committee, two-year term, Laureen Thomas, term to expire November 2017, and to the Environmental Affairs Committee, Ed Mitchell, a two-year term to expire November 2017, and the Multicultural Affairs Committee, two-year term, Ken Weiss, November 2017.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four, zero. Would anyone whose name was just mentioned, please stand up? Yes, please. I see at least one person in the audience, Stacy.
I don't want the camera.
Too bad. Stacy Simon from our Educational Enrichment Committee. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Stacy. Next, we have presentations, and I would like members of the Quince Orchard Marching Band to join me at the podium.
Was really hoping for brass and drums.
You wouldn't hope for law.
I'm John. Pat. Hi. Great, thanks for being here. So you guys are here representing the whole band, and we're going to have a whole bunch of certificates to send back with you, just so you know. The Quince Orchard High School Marching Band kicked off their competitive season with a 10-day training camp back in August that consisted of eight to 12-hour workdays. Now that school's in session, or when school is in session, I guess it's still in session for another day, right? Yeah, okay. They practice three days a week after school. That's correct, right? Three days a week?
Yeah.
Okay. The Cougar Band enjoyed the benefits of their hard work with a win in their first competition this season, the U.S. Bands Marine Corps Invitational, held September 28th at the Naval Academy. This competition was open to all members of U.S. Bands, which is Quince Orchard's competitive circuit, and draws bands from as far as New England. The Quince Orchard Marching Band also placed first at the Reservoir High School Competition on October 10th, third at the Paint Branch High School Competition on October 24th, and second at the Maryland State Championships on November 1st. And I'm going to just steal this from you and read real quick. We have a certificate of recognition, and we have a copy for each of the band members from the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg, presented to Quince Orchard High School. Congratulations on winning the 2015 Maryland Class 3A U.S. Bands Marine Corps Invitational and placing second in 2015 Maryland Class 3A U.S. Bands Maryland State Championship, presented this 21st day of December 2015, and signed by me. Let's give them a great congratulations.
One more.
Would you guys like to say anything? No pressure, but you could.
You're in charge.
All right, well, congratulations on a great season, guys. Thank you. And we had another presentation that was scheduled, but it's postponed, so I'd like to invite Tony to join me here and present the 2015 First, Second, and Third Quarter Employee Recognition Awards.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Ashman mentioned, we're doing three-quarters' worth of employee awards. We're doing a little bit of catch-up. The Employee Recognition Committee has been going through some redesigns and some member changes. They're back up to speed now. Throughout the entire process, nominations were being accepted, although the committee was not available to select winners until very recently. That being said, not all the winners we have, we have a number of winners here, not all of them were able to be here tonight, but we're pleased to recognize all the individual employees and teams that were nominated, and to announce the employees and teams that were selected to receive the quarterly awards. With that, I will read a description of some of the awards for people that actually aren't here yet, or are not here. The winner of the 2015 First Quarter Employee Recognition Award is Olympia Huff. She was, she's in the senior program at the Benjamin Gaither Center. Olympia was nominated for taking on additional roles at the center during times when they were short-staffed. She volunteered to teach extra classes for seniors, she managed the part-type staff at the front desk, she even mopped floors during the time when we didn't have enough people to cover, and to ensure that the programs continued to run at a high level. Her dedication to the city of Gaithersburg is a fine example of what it means to be a team player. So congratulations to Olympia. Whenever you see her, please pass it along, and she'll get her certificate shortly.
All right.
In the second quarter, our winner is here, it's our own Britta Manaco, who, where did she go? There she is. She was sitting there a second ago. Now, I used to be on this side. She handed off the camera for just a few minutes. The winner of the Second Quarter Employee Recognition Award is Britta Manaco, our Director of the Department of Community and Public Relations. She was nominated for being an exceptional supervisor, an all-around excellent employee, which I can concur with 100%. Her respect for her staff is exceptional, her guidance is respectful and professional. She's described by staff as calm, courteous, genuinely enthusiastic, and conscientious. Britta represents the city of Gaithersburg with that same level of integrity. She attends most city events and serves as an excellent community resource, as she is very informed about the needs of our residents and the city services available to them. Congratulations to Britta.
Let's give her a round of applause.
On three. One, two, three. All right. Get back to work. We had two winners of the Third Quarter Employee Recognition Award. Jacob Fayad, who I think is here. Come on up. And Shabon Halmos, who is not, I believe. So we'll start with Shabon. She was nominated for her role in providing an excellent summer camp experience for Gaithersburg youth. She's responsible for the scheduling, staffing, and financial arrangements for more than 300 bus and van trips each summer. Her attention to detail keeps the eight vehicles assigned to the summer camp program and the Montgomery County Public School buses shuttling campers in and out of Gaithersburg in the most efficient way possible, saving both time and money. So again, we'll thank Shabon when we see her. Jacob, who is here, welcome. Was nominated for being highly committed to the task of helping his teammates find success in their work. He makes a positive impact on the lives of others, encouraging coworker respect by being a team player, and positioning himself as a guide, resource, and troubleshooter in many areas of expertise. He takes the initiative to share his knowledge, which benefits the city greatly. His coworkers respect and look forward to working with Jacob. Congratulations.
All right.
And now for the teams. The winner of the First Quarter Team Recognition Award is the Department of Natural Resources' Stream Restoration Grant Project Team, consisting of the following people, maybe represented by Mark, Mara Dimwitty, Adam Newhart, Mark Cover, Diane Back, Louise Kaufman, Yon Kim, Meredith Strider, Julius Arnold, Carlos Reyes, and John Byrd. They were named Team of the First Quarter for their excellent interdepartmental teamwork during the Governor's Stream Restoration Challenge. Is this you, Mark? Mark often does the work of 10. This project entailed the planting of 665 trees and engaged local students in Chesapeake and coastal bay protection efforts. The challenge itself is a competitive grant program with the goal of establishing 1,000 acres of streamside forests. The city, in collaboration with the Audubon Naturalist Society of Chevy Chase, was awarded an initial grant of $71,628 by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources in 2013. Because the project was viewed as an exemplary model, that funding was subsequently increased to about $114,000. Through a collaboration of the Youth Services Division and Gaithersburg High School's ESOL programs, students were able to improve the environment while earning student-service learning hours. Members of this team also coordinated with a number of external partners, high school staff, the Audubon Society, the Muddy Branch Alliance, the Isaac Walton League, the Latin American Youth Center, the beloved community initiative, the Wildlife Council, and the Montgomery County Conservation Corps. Congratulations to the Stream Restoration Team. And then, in the third quarter, the recognition award is given to the Youth Services Team at Robertson Park Youth Center. If we could have those members come up. It's comprised of Jake Hersam, Shadell Canty, Framata Canoe, Amin DaKun, Scott Castillo, Rebecca Ubue, Alonzo Carrasco, Elijah Maynard, and Demetrius Good. A good number of them here. This team was recognized for consistently going above and beyond to create an atmosphere that is safe and fun for middle and high school members. Specifically, as the supervisor, Jake has shown dedication and leadership. Fresh programming ideas have increased the quality and morale of both the staff and the participants, so congratulations to the Robertson Park Team.
Next, we have public comments, where this is the time when the mayor and council would hear from anybody who'd like to speak on any topic that's not a public hearing topic. Tonight, we have no public hearings. We ask that you keep your remarks to no more than three minutes, state your name and address for the record. When your time is down to 30 seconds, the timer will beep and turn yellow, and when your time's up, it'll beep and turn red. Who would like to be the first speaker? Come on up.
My name is Aaron Rosenzweig. I live on 1 Thorburn Road with yard birds. I'm part of teamgaithersburg.org. Our City Council publicly supports the CCT, the Cross Corridors Transitway, also known as the BRT, which means Bus Rapid Transit. Those are confusing words for a very simple concept. Our city supports the county's dream of a poor man's metro system, which will extend the real metro station at Shady Grove and connect Clarkspur. Because the real metro train takes real money and planning, the county wants to widen our roads and use buses instead of trains. Reasonable neighbors point to the ride-on bus system, which is hardly utilized and already covers most of the CCT. Reasonable neighbors question the intelligence of adding traffic lights to Muddy Branch and Great Seneca Highway. Reasonable neighbors question the wisdom of high-speed buses weaving in and out of traffic as they get to the fast lane. Reasonable neighbors wonder why we are expected to raise our taxes to fund the CCT instead of spending the money to fix our overcrowded schools. City Council, you have reasons for supporting the CCT, like new jobs, new growth, and new people to tax, especially after you convert billboard farm into an office space. Fine, there is a grain of truth to that which I cannot deny. What I cannot fathom, what I cannot accept, is your exuberance in throwing individual citizens under the bus. I watched in amazement as you publicly spoke of only one home in Gaithersburg that would be taken by eminent domain. Only is the key word here, as if it is insignificant. Do you even know who lives in that home? Did you visit them to at least express your concern? Do you know what they look like? Do you know their name? I know, Mr. Jung. He is right here. You would be an excellent council if we had nobody living here. You simply refuse to take care of our neighbors, even when it is so easy to do so. If you only had a heart, you would learn, as I have, that this man wants to retire. How can he? You want to level his home to make the CCT. Fine, but do not mess with this man's life. Don't tell him you'll take his home in 2016. Oh, no, 2018. Oh, no, maybe in 2020. Whenever you get the money to build the CCT instead of our schools, nobody will buy his home in this situation. He is stuck. Would the council knock on Mr. Jung's door? Would you get to know him? Would you make an honest attempt to answer his questions and help him plan for his future? If our city is too large, too busy, to take this simple act of kindness, then our city has grown too large. We have sacrificed character for greed. When we have the ability to make things better, yet refuse, it is inexcusable. Are we not our brother's keeper? Is not Mr. Jung a neighbor in good standing? No citizen should be left behind in a wealthy city like Gaithersburg. In times like these, if character counts, fish or cut bait.
Thank you. Nick, would you like to be the next speaker?
Any comments? Anything?
I already commented in that I'm asking for the next speaker. Darling.
Hi. Darlene Belzegorelli, 307 Woodland Road.
Darling, if you can grab the microphone, just, there you go.
Happy holidays, everybody. On December 12th, I met with a bunch of neighbors at my home for tea, and one of the things that we decided is that since this is a meeting, it's too late for all of them to come, it's too late, they've got children, they've got things to do, that I would actually do the speaking on their behalf. And from that meeting, four things came up. One, that Gaithersburg is a care-to-count city. You guys pimp this out, that's the language of the land, but you guys got to honor it, too. Oftentimes, people are engaging the city, engaging with rudeness, and that was the number-one thing that people were saying, that somehow we've grown too big for our britches, and talking to people with respect and dignity is just something that we just don't do anymore. Contempt has replaced community. That was one phrase that I wish I had thought of, but I didn't think of it. Fiscal responsible. We never have enough money to do the things we need to do, but we seem to come up the money to do the things we want to be do. Like, for example, moving this chamber across the street, well, we don't have the money for that. If you don't have the money to repair the roads, fix the lampposts, fix the Frederick Avenue, then you shouldn't come up spending money for this kind of stuff either. Communication, since you don't have the money for the things we need to do, and you shouldn't be moving this from, you should really put in translation information, so, equipment, so the diverse population that we constantly talk about can actually participate. I praise it out. It's only $2,000 for 25 headsets and a translation unit, so that all the people in this community, the 72% Latinos, can come to these meetings and participate. So if you guys can't find the money to do the things we want to do, then you shouldn't do the things you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd like to be the next speaker? Not seeing anyone. I will, next agenda item is from the mayor and council, and I wanted to take a small, take a small bit of our time here and invite Police Chief Mark Soroka to the podium. Over the past week, we had a highly-publicized incident at Lake Forest Mall, and I was talking back with the chief this morning, and, you know, I wanted, I wanted the chief to have a chance to come and explain what sort of security measures, how the city is allocating its time and resources to making our community safe, including places like Lake Forest, and anything else he wants to share about, about the incident, about, about crime in general right now.
Sure. Good evening. I'm going to talk tonight about three things I thought would cover that, which you asked me to do. First, talk about the incident that occurred last week.
Mark, can you point the mic, there you go.
Talked last week about the attempted armed robbery that resulted in a stabbing, followed by crime at the Lake Forest Mall, and then finally, some of the things that we're doing to enhance safety at the Lake Forest Mall. On December 17th, about 1:34 in the afternoon, a 63-year-old female was walking out of the Lake Forest Mall in the Macy's Department Store. She was walking toward her car parked on the upper-level lot. When she reached her car and was entering the vehicle, she was approached by an Hispanic male in his 20s, about 5'5", 5'8", thin to medium build, and he was armed with a knife. He demanded her cash, of which he didn't have any, and a struggle ensued. During that struggle, the female victim was stabbed. Subsequently, the suspect fled toward Russell Avenue. When he fled, there were several items of evidentiary value that were recovered and have submitted to the crime lab for DNA analysis. There was also a witness to this crime, as well as was captured on mall exterior video surveillance footage. So there, we have sublimity factors here, and I'm confident that we will be making arrest. This type of crime is highly unusual at the mall, as it is throughout the city. In fact, this is the first crime at the mall this year that involved an armed robbery with a weapon that resulted in injury to the victim. Having said that, that's one crime too many, and that's why it's receiving the utmost priority from the detectives from the city police, as well as the county police. In regard to crime in and around the mall, I'll just go briefly over some crime data for this year, compare it briefly to some crime numbers for last year for the same period, and this is as of yesterday. The most frequent occurring crime that we have in the city, throughout the city, to include at Lake Forest Mall, are thefts. And the number-one call for service at the Lake Forest Mall for the officers that respond there is for shoplifting. When you back out shoplifting crimes, the officers, the majority of the calls that they respond to are for disorderly conduct, of which, as of yesterday, we responded to 54 calls for disorderly conduct, and that was compared to 41 last year. That is up. Most of those disorderly calls are involving teenagers, and the location in the mall is the food court. The second most frequent occurring call that we received there is for larcenies, exclusive of shoplifting. We had 43 this year compared to 64 last year. And then the third most frequent occurring call is for assaults. We had 12 this year, and we had 16 last year. We have had one aggravated assault at the mall that occurred back in mid-February, and that involved a 40-year-old store employee that got into an argument with his supervisor, and that culminated in him throwing a pair of scissors at her and choking her, and he was arrested. When you look at all of the crimes at the mall this year, as of yesterday, there's been nine fewer incidents in 2015 compared to last year. But I primarily focus on the crimes against persons. When you look at the crimes against persons at the mall, there's been 18 of those. About 2/3 of those are involving misdemeanor assaults involving teenagers. There. What we're doing there is, the mall has interior and exterior surveillance cameras. They have private contractual uniformed security officers. My understanding is they promised to add additional security officers there. Those private security officers are supplemented by off-duty, uniformed city officers that work there in a secondary employment capacity and paid for by the mall. From Thanksgiving through Christmas, we have doubled our staffing of the off-duty officers that work at the mall. This is the fifth consecutive year that we have done a crime suppression detail on the Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving. And the results this year are comparatively consistent with the results in prior years. This year, more than a dozen officers from the county police and the city police arrested 16 people for theft during that two-day period, two for disorderly conduct, and one person was arrested on an open warrant for disorderly conduct and theft. In addition to that, it's one of our focused enforcement areas, which means we assign additional officers to the Lake Forest Mall on a daily basis. The Montgomery County Police District Community Action Team and Special Assignment Team is also supplementing our patrol officers and our Street Crimes Unit, and in these Part 1 crimes that I've identified in here, the follow-up investigation is done in those cases by a detective. We're not seeing an increase on the data that there is more crime at the mall than there has been in prior years, but the mall is a challenge for us, and that's why we are committed to keeping the mall as safe as possible and working to make it even safer for the employees that work at those stores, as well as the visitors that shop in the mall.
Thank you, Mark. I know it's, we had our staff contact the mall owner as of this morning. I know, I heard from Tom Lonigan, our Economic Development Director, that, that they were, that the owner was, they're not located here locally, but they were very aware of the situation and were taking appropriate actions, and so we're glad to hear that. And obviously, it's a, it's a very important area for the city, for us here. We're all concerned about it, and that's why we allocate resources to it on an ongoing basis. I, it's, based on what you're saying, it does seem as if this event was a complete anomaly, and, you know, I believe, I was at the mall a couple of times this weekend myself, as was my wife. I believe that it's as safe as any mall. I believe that it's, it's as safe as any, any mall. And I, does anyone have any questions of the chief while he's here to talk about this?
Just, I'm glad to hear that the, that you and, are working, you and your team are working with the county police as well, and with the mall security to ensure that, that as much as possible, we can keep these incidents from occurring. It's clear that, I think overall, the, the kind of crime that we've seen is on a decline. It's an especially crazy time of year for shoppers as well, but also for potent, for shoppers becoming potential victims, either because they leave their car unlocked or other, you know, crimes of opportunity that occur. So I think good enforcement and visibility is always a good thing, and probably visibility is a, is a really big and important part of the whole, the whole prevention model that we use. So I know our public encounters with the, with our police, with Montgomery County Police has always been very positive and appreciative, so I'm glad to hear that that's continuing, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to take a statement. I've, obviously, we've shopped at that mall since it was open, and gone through its heyday, and, you know, it's, at one time, it was the only place to shop, and, and we drove all the way from, you know, Alney and with all the, all of our shopping. And so, you know, overall, the mall's not a dangerous place. You're very correct. But perception is everything, as you and I've talked about. So whatever we can do, and I'm glad to see everybody isn't going to be on top of it, the new owners, one of the things that I would suggest, and this is, I haven't really gone into it deeply, but is that in the food court, is, is make the, the immediate entrances, exits only, and if people want to use the food court, come into the court through the, right through the mall, like most of the other places do. That's a fairly easy access, and it's become a hangout. You know, the kids are nice, but, you know, and you get a group of people around, the perception outweighs all the crime. And so those are some things, and I just thought off the top of my head, just simple things, and it gives everybody, you know, a good, a better feeling. And I think that, you know, if we do something as a council and, you know, the mayor go up and maybe have a day, you know, recognizing the mall and, you know, doing some other things like that, that also would be a nice step in the, in working with the owners and doing something like that. So those are just some suggestions, but, you know, it's a good mall, and you all do a job there, and, you know, but, like I said, perception is much worse than reality, so.
Anyone else? Thank you. Chief, really appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, so back to from the mayor and council, we're gonna start with council member Marafa.
Well, I just spoke. This has been a pretty busy week, and everybody's, most everybody's been to them. We had the MML Legislative Dinner that we've all attended, and, and we also had the Legislative Breakfast, which, I don't know how they do it, but there's about 800 people that come to this, and it's, everybody who's anybody in politics in Montgomery County show up there, and it's a really nice affair. We had a nice affair. We also stopped by the, the police holiday party and thanked everybody for their service this year. That was one of two places that night, so we didn't get to stay as long as we would have liked. And I want to make sure everybody goes out and sees our Christmas lights. You know, that's just a spectacular this year, gets bigger and better every year. And you already said it for a really sad note with both Brianna and Brian, as you mentioned earlier tonight, and their prayers are out to their families. And I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a very happy holiday, a happy Hanukkah, and if I've missed anything, happy that, too. So it's gonna be a good time. We're looking forward to next year for bigger and better things, and Gaithersburg is great as ever.
Thanks, Henry. Ryan?
Thank you. I just want to make a procedural note for a variety of reasons. It is the practice of our mayor and council during our formal meetings not to respond to every individual public comment that is provided during our public comment period. We, of course, listen to all of them, pay attention to all of them, and follow up as appropriate, but procedurally, it would be very difficult, I think it would create a lot of challenges, if we were trying to respond right here on the spot without an opportunity to collect our thoughts or develop plans to every suggestion that is posed by a member of the public. So I think folks should keep that in mind when they come and offer their public comments, which we're happy to listen to, but, you know, we have our from the mayor and council, we have our other processes in place to develop our responses to public inquiry, and we're happy to go through those processes, but I think folks should remember that. I also want to offer my condolences to the folks that have already been mentioned, who we lost over the last week or two, and their families. I want to thank the chief for his update. And whenever you're dealing with public safety at the local government level, it is always a struggle between perception and data, and obviously, we, we live in an extremely safe place, the data shows that, but we also live in a world and a time where we need to be smart about going about our business, but it's the holiday time, and I certainly would encourage folks to be out and about and doing all the things you normally do, and supporting the local economy, and celebrating. I know that I will be doing that with my family and look forward to seeing all of you out there. I did also want to follow up on the MML Legislative Dinner, which we had about a week and a half ago, was very successful. We had a number of state legislators and a few county legislators as well, who joined a room full of municipal mayors and council members from around Montgomery County. We took that opportunity to lobby those county and state folks very hard on a handful of priorities. The two statewide Maryland Municipal League priorities this year are highway user revenues, which are important funds that come back for street construction and street maintenance to municipal governments from the state. We've been getting short-changed on those funds for a number of years, and we've been lobbying hard to try and get more funds and get back to where we used to be in terms of getting those funds from the state to continue our road maintenance programs. The other state priority, making sure that we have funding for Project Open Space, which is an important state program that gives local governments funding to buy space, buy land for parks, to develop and build parks so that they can be there as open space facilities, whether it's playgrounds, or whether it's trails, or whether it's just forested area for folks to enjoy. And there's been some concern over the years that state government sometimes raids the open space fund to balance their state budget, which they're not really supposed to do. So we continue to lobby hard this year for dedicating those open space funds for local governments. We've certainly taken advantage of those funds in many ways here in Gaithersburg, and would like to continue doing so. And then our Montgomery County chapter of the Maryland Municipal League added a couple of supplemental legislative priorities to the statewide municipal league, and our local priorities that we are lobbying our state legislators on are really focused on education in schools, not all that different than what you've already heard from us in the, in the previous months, but we are targeting in particular what's called the Geographic Cost of Education Index, which is a statewide formula that is supposed to provide additional school, public school funding for those areas of the state where it costs more to educate our kids. Montgomery County is one of those places. It costs more to educate kids here than it does in certain other parts of the state, and so we're lobbying for that additional funding for education, and we're also lobbying for additional school construction funding, as we've been talking about for a number of weeks now, from the state, so that we can try to address overcrowding and other, other concerns that we have with our school facilities. So stay tuned. The state legislative session obviously starts in January in a few weeks, and we'll be active, as we always are down in Annapolis, lobbying for those priorities and other city priorities, and we will be reporting back to you on our, our progress. I wanted to thank the staff who were involved in the, the planning training that a number of us attended a week or so ago, and that was a good opportunity to refresh our recollection about how the planning process works and some kind of, some of the intricacies and details of the process and how we have to go through it, and some of the rules we have to follow when we go through the development and planning process. So thanks to all those who were involved in that. I also attended the Committee for Montgomery Breakfast with pretty much every organization and officials throughout Montgomery County, whether it was business, civic leaders, labor, anybody who, basically, that's become a huge annual event, and it's a real good opportunity for us, again, to meet with all those folks, academia, county government, everybody. And we actually got to listen to a really interesting exchange between the county executives of Prince George's and Montgomery County, and the mayor of the District of Columbia, who joined us in Bethesda as well, and got to talk about economic development and how the three governments are gonna try and work together, and sometimes how they compete with each other for economic development. I thought that was a really worthwhile panel session to sit in on and learn from. I know a number of us, if not all of us up here, were at that event. Henry mentioned Winter Lights. It's open for about another week. It's not open on Christmas Day, but otherwise open through New Year's Eve, and I hope folks will come and attend. It gets better and better every year. And then finally, since this is the season of celebrations, I did want to remind everybody that the greater Washington region has a service called Sober Ride. It's a free taxi for anybody who feels they're somewhere, they're at a party, they've had a few too many eggnogs, and they need a sober driver home. There are some conditions on it, but it's a pretty generous program in terms of giving you a free ride over a certain amount of distance or, or dollar value. You just dial 1-800-200-TAXI. Again, it's 1-800-200-TAXI if you find yourself out one evening between now and New Year's Day and you need a sober ride home, and someone will come pick you up for free. And then finally, want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a very happy and safe New Years.
Thank you, Ryan. Neil?
All right. So I want all those same meetings and gatherings, so I won't repeat everything. It was a really good opportunity to get to chat with other people who have a direct impact on us here in Gaithersburg. And, you know, just to respond to some of the comments that were made, I've been working hard on regional transportation issues and, and looking at school capacity issues and things like that, as have we all. I think it's become very clear that one of the core issues is there's simply not enough money being allocated to pay for building the stuff that we need to keep up with transportation, with school capacity, and so on. And in talking to people at MCPS, I, I think part of what's happened is they basically ask for what they think they can get, as opposed to asking for what they really need. And looking at transportation, I think there's a lot of the same things going on. So what I'm spending a fair amount of time on is figuring out, is asking the different groups what the number is really, and we had Bruce Chris Bell from MCPS here a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him that question. You know, there's some number that we need to ask for as a region, and either we're gonna get it or we're not gonna get it, but if we don't ask, we're definitely not gonna get it, and we're not, we need to be able to unclog our roads and uncrowd our schools, and I think that's gonna be a very important project for, that'll affect us in Gaithersburg. Here in Gaithersburg, we can't fix those problems directly. We can't, we, we don't have the kind of money that it takes to do that. Those are hundreds of millions of dollars worth of problems, and I don't think we want to raise everybody's taxes 10 times here. So, but I think that there, there's probably a road to get there, and that's gonna be a very, make for a very interesting year next year. So anyway, aside from that, you know, we heard a lot about some, some issues with some, with crime and, and some people who passed away recently, and I just want to reflect on the fact that today is the darkest day of the year, but after today, it gets lighter, and hopefully, everybody will keep that in mind as we go forward. A Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to everyone, and I'll pass the mic.
Thank you, Neil. Mike?
Okay, let me read this official announcement. After closed executive session, a closed meeting was held at City Hall by the mayor and city council on Monday, December 7th, 2015, at approximately 9:53 PM pursuant to a motion adopted unanimously. The meeting was proposed to be closed pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were the city's ethics ordinance and the Potomac Valley Shopping Center Annexation Agreement. Present at the meeting were Mayor Ashman, council members Harris, Marafa, Sesma, Spiegel, and Wu. Staff present were City Manager Tomasello, Deputy City Manager Enslinger, City Attorney Board, Planning and Code Administration Director Schlichting, Planning Director Mattson, and Community Planning Manager Schwartz. Schlichting, Marston, and, Mattson, and Schwartz left at 10:06 PM. Upon conclusion of the discussion, the closed meeting was adjourned at approximately 10:33 PM. So I want to thank the chief for being here tonight, give us some, some perspective about crime in the city, but also the recent incident at Lake Forest. You know, since I moved here over 20 years ago, I've always shopped at Lake Forest on a, you know, a regular basis. I mean, not every week, but probably a couple times a quarter, and, and usually more often during the, the holiday seasons. I've always felt safe while shopping there, and I'll continue to shop there. In fact, I have to do some panic shopping, I guess, as, as been referred to before the holidays. So I, I, I'm sure I'll be spending a couple of hours there over the next week or so. Again, I want to express my condolences to the Goodenough family and the Kildee family. Brian Kildee was a terrific guy, he's one of the nicest men I ever met, so I'm gonna miss him. He's always a great supporter of Dolly and her political career, and so we're, we're gonna be there to support Dolly as much as we can. Also want to offer my respects and condolences to the Montgomery County Police Department. Lost an officer recently who was working at a, a traffic stop to catch drunk drivers, people who were driving under the influence, Officer Noah Leota. He grew up in the Gaithersburg area, was 24-years-old, and was hit by a drunk driver. So I think one of the things that I will support as a council member, encouraging the county delegation in Annapolis to do something about our drunk driving laws and enforcement of that. It's clear that, that the laws we have are not doing enough to prevent the kind of tragedies that we have here. I know our honor guard was there at the, at the ceremony and funeral for Officer Leota, and I know that everybody appreciates the work that our police officers do, county and city, state troopers, et cetera. We have to remember that they're always in harm's way, so pray for their safety all the time. And then was able to, I want to congratulate the Gaithersburg chorus on their performance. I was able to see their, their winter concert on December 8th at Asbury, and they did another performance that, that Saturday. I hope it was a good, as crowded, the, the hall at Asbury, Roseborough Hall was, was packed. And so finally, I want to say, it is, today is the winter solstice, it is the darkest day of the year, it's the longest night of the year. Actually, the solstice is at 10:48 PM tonight, but every day, we'll add a couple of minutes to daylight, of daylight to the day, so. And in that spirit, I wish everybody Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Festivus, if you celebrate one of those, and Happy Winter Solstice, you know, if you dance around a pole or put your complaints up on a pole, you know, this is the time to do it, so enjoy yourselves, be safe, be careful, enjoy the time with your families and friends, and if you need a ride, call Sober Ride. And in fact, I was gonna ask, perhaps we could have that information posted on our website and, and tweet that out, as well as put it on Facebook page. So anyway, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Mike is always very careful to, to not leave out the Festivus constituency, which we all appreciate very much. I want to just associate myself with all, with the comments from everyone tonight. I, I appreciate everything everyone had to say, and particularly wanted to wish everyone in the community, community a happy and merry everything. I want one further note about Lake Forest, as we look to going from the darkest place to the, to the lightest. There is, there is great reason for optimism. I mean, not only can you go to Lake Forest currently and be perfectly safe and have a good shopping experience, but I happen to have the opportunity to be in a meeting with the new owners and city staff recently, and they presented the beginnings of what could be a plan that, that could come before us at some point soon, and I'm not gonna get into the details of it, other than to say, and maybe Tom is during economic development, no, he's not, okay. I didn't want to step on his toes, but, but I just say that, that having looked at it and seeing that this, this group is very bullish on the city of Gaithersburg and on that, that particular area, there's some reason for particular optimism about it and not in the too-distant future, so keep an eye out for that, please. It is my understanding that we need a motion to conduct a closed executive session this evening, with the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the mayor and city council of the city of Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session tonight, Monday, December 21st. a closed executive session tonight, Monday, December 21, 2015, immediately following the scheduled regular session pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. The topic to be discussed is the Fishman site.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries 4-0. Just a quick announcement that next week, we will not be conducting a work session due to the holidays. And the next regular meeting, the mayor and council will be held on Monday, January 4. Next, we have from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a Lake Forest anecdote. I suppose, you know, many of you know I worked there in the day it opened, I think 1978, which is a long time ago, but I have tremendous --
Before you were born.
Before you were born. Excellent. Glad to hear it. Was that you? Okay, good.
Were you delivering babies?
I was not. I was delivering food.
Okay.
But yeah, tremendous empathy for them all, and, you know, glad to see people are paying attention to it, that our public safety people are paying attention, and that, you know, we're taking everything in its proper perspective, in proper seriousness, but also helping them all move forward, which is everyone's goal at the end of the day.
Yes.
A lot of empathy for that property, which I've lived with, you know, for most of my life, frankly. I just had one ish -- one item, which you've actually already gotten heads up on from staff, which is the inter-agency commission on homelessness. You got a little briefing. The agency, for people who don't follow it, released an annual report. It was established about a year ago with the goal of -- for 2015, to prevent and end veteran homelessness in Montgomery County by the end of the year. And they have, in fact, gone a long way toward actually accomplishing that goal. Fifty-eight chronically homeless veterans are now living in stable housing. Some of these veterans have been homeless for as long as 10 years. So it's an enormous achievement. And then when they met to discuss, you know, the accomplishment and plan for next year, County Councilmember Leventhal, I believe you were also told, described the city as being unique among municipalities for its generosity and investment in addressing homelessness. And it just made me think that, you know, we're a city with a specific goal of assuming actually a leadership role in a lot of policy issues, and this is one of them. You know, not just a role, but a role commensurate to, you know, our place in the county. It's really just great to see that actually happening on a lot of levels. You know, it seemed fitting for the last meeting of this year to, you know, which has been a really good year, frankly, for a lot of people in Gaithersburg, you know, to, you know, as we head into the holidays, wish everybody Happy Holidays, but also to express, you know, my personal appreciation for the way that staff and the council work together, first of all, to establish clear policy goals, and then to actually start achieving them. You know, that's -- a lot of municipalities are not in that position, but it's great to be in a position here in Gaithersburg. So thank you on behalf of staff.
That is very nice.
Tony, let me ask you something about what you just talked about on the homelessness with veterans. Is there any possibility, and the public works also, if some of our part-time jobs that we do, could we maybe look at some of their -- those individuals and see if they could fill those roles and maybe give them a little preference? I don't know any of the details about it, but, you know, that's a trade-off, I would think that maybe be well worth looking into.
The preference part is difficult, but we do make sure that the jobs themselves, you know, there are agencies within the county and the city that do help place. I don't know, I have no data about whether we have hired any particular veterans, but I believe we have. But I'll take that back.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how we'd do it, but it would be a good discussion to have.
Great. Next, we have Economic Development with Tom Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for covering them all. Very briefly, last Monday, I had the opportunity to represent the city hosting a table at an entrepreneur workshop hosted by Congressman John Delaney at the University of Shady Grove. Just wanted to mention that about 250 people attended the workshop, provided constituents with a one-stop shop to meet with entrepreneurs, federal, state, local, business organizations, and it featured a pretty good keynote event by Maria Contreras-Suite, the top official and administrator of the U.S. Small Business Administration, also a member of President Obama's cabinet. Overall, a great event. About 50 of those entrepreneurs stopped by our table to see what kind of resources we might be able to provide, and we were certainly thanked by the congressman's office for our ongoing partnership with his office. Secondly, and finally, I just wanted to end the year on a happy note about a tenant sticking around. We're happy to announce that American Type Culture Collection, ATCC, is staying put in the city. Not at their long location at 22 First Field Road, proximity to Novavax, but rather new space, 31,000 square feet they've taken on Perry Parkway, formerly held by Sarah Care, long vacated, actually. The company was established in 1925, headquartered in Manassas, and they are known as the premier global biologic material resource and standards association. The company is investing in improvements to about 12,000 of that 31,000 square feet. They have about 30 employees and will be moving in next year. Also wanted to mention, foregoing, not Economic Development directly, but last night, my family and I had the opportunity to drive up and go to Winter Lights ourselves, and just say it's the talk of Bridges Public Charter School in Washington, DC. They had a great time, and I just want to mention, and Michelle, it was our first time. It was terrific.
That's great. That's great. I was -- actually, my family and I went on Saturday, and it was so jam-packed, it must have -- from Long Draft Road to the entrance was probably 40 minutes.
Right.
But it was worth every bit of it. It was amazing this year.
We had a minor wait, but it moved along.
Yes.
And worth it.
Yes. Most definitely. Thank you. Next, we have Policy Discussion, and we are inviting Kevin Roman to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Before you tonight, we have a policy discussion on an ordinance to amend Chapter 18AA of the city code entitled Rental Housing Licensing. The proposed ordinance includes amending Section 18AA 2 entitled Definitions and to add a new section, 18AA 7.1, entitled Common Ownership Community Fees. To review, the ordinance would provide that a rental housing license for a dwelling unit in a common ownership community would not be issued or renewed by the city unless the owner certifies that the common ownership community fees for the dwelling have been paid. Additionally, the ordinance would allow the city to deny, suspend, revoke, or refuse to renew a rental license upon receipt of a recorded statement of lien or an unsatisfied judgment for unpaid community fees from the common ownership community. And at the public hearing in -- back in November, council raised some concerns about tenant protections, and I wanted to take a moment to clarify that. In the event the city had to revoke a rental license and cause the unit to be vacated, not only would the landlord be subject to the issuance of municipal infraction penalties, but the impacted tenant would also have cause to file claim to recover damages, including loss of rent, security deposit, and other expenses. Tenants would be able to seek relief by filing a complaint with the city's commission landlord -- excuse me, the city's Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs or the District Court of Maryland. And hopefully, that clarifies the concerns. The ordinance was introduced on October 19, 2015. Public hearing held on November 16, 2015. The record was held open until December 2, 2015, and we did not receive any additional comments in the public record. Accordingly, staff is seeking final action on the ordinance.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. You know, this makes a lot of sense to me. This was not a -- this wasn't a difficult decision, seeing this. I think this makes perfect sense. You know, the one thing I hope, when you deal with liens and things of that nature, legal mechanisms, occasionally, there can be situations where somebody is acting in good faith, didn't realize they were behind in dues or whatever, and -- or whatever circumstance it is. I would hope that staff could take a look and see somebody that's acting in good faith and has shown that they've paid the dues, and even if there's some sort of other thing hanging over it that's -- that is taking its time or whatever. I just hope we can use our judgment to some degree to make sure.
Absolutely. I think in the policy and enforcement issues, if there was somebody that was in arrears, we'd give them notification and give them the opportunity to make it -- to make it -- get caught up in the assessment.
Right. Good. Very good.
That was something similar that I had mentioned earlier in the process here about, you know, I think that the policy behind this is good, and I'm, you know, I'm going to vote for it, but I did want to make sure that there were built in not only protections for tenants, but also protections for the occasional, you know, the good-faith individual property owner who's trying to comply, but for whatever reason, might have a valid dispute with their HOA about how much they owe or something like that. And as Kevin and Lynn explained a while ago, this really only kicks in if somebody's got a legal judgment or lien against them, and there are several procedural safeguards before someone can actually get a lien against a property owner. And to me, that allayed some of my concerns, which were the same as yours, Mr. Mayor. And so, you know, I'm -- my heartburn is allayed a little bit by that. Although, I mean, we don't know what kind of situations can arise, you know, there's all kinds of convoluted situations between owners and HOAs that happen. And so between these safeguards in the law and the additional safeguards of what we hope and expect our staff will work on to try to, you know, deal with all of the folks involved, I think that will address the concern. But I agree with you, that was something I had thought about earlier, but I do think the way the law is currently written deals with it as best as possible while still achieving that policy goal.
And Kevin, I trust that if there are any sort of unforeseen or crazy circumstances that arise that could be fixed legislatively in some way, you'll come back to us.
Absolutely. We'd come back.
Any other comments?
I think you guys covered it all. It's pretty good. I'm glad that we have the safeguard to provide some protection for the tenants as well. And, you know, invariably, this is really an issue between the property owner, not necessarily the resident, but the property owner and the HOA, and we know those disputes, you know, occur outside of the -- our jurisdiction of responsibility. So, you know, we're kind of in at the end, so we can't do anything about some of those disputes. There is a way that some of those communities can deal with that, but we've dealt with -- we'll probably come back and talk about that again in the next year. So I'm prepared to vote for this. I'll move the resolution.
Yeah, I think the nice thing about this, though, is that using common sense, but at the same time, enough safeguards built in to give you the flexibility to do the correct thing, and that we really have to get down to the nitty-gritty before these things kick in, and that's a good thing.
That's correct.
There are a lot of unintended consequences in these, and I think we've addressed them up here, so good work.
Great. Neil, do you want to say anything?
No, I fully support this. Having come out of an HOA and understanding what the issues are, and in particular, the importance, not only of an HOA being fiscally solvent, but the importance of that for owners of condominiums in particular, to be able to get FHA financing for when they want to sell their units to new people, it's a good solution with the right safeguards for all parties. So I fully support the motion.
Okay, so Mike had made the motion. Do we have a second?
We do have a second. I just wanted to add to that. I mean, that does obviously help to achieve our housing goal of making these -- some of these units available to folks who could otherwise pay a down payment in a mortgage but couldn't get financing in those units unless we had enough folks in that development paying their HOA fees on time. So you make an absolutely outstanding point, which is really the driver behind this. So with that, I will second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Carries 4-0. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Happy Holidays to you. Next, we have from the city attorney. Nothing? Anything from any other staff present? Yes, Dennis, come on up.
I just had one item, mayor and council members. I just wanted to let you know about a task order we issued to Flora Teeter Landscape Architects. It was for the landscape design, at least the preliminary design and final design for the CPSC former park site, and that was in the amount of $70,000. That includes the project all the way to the end for the bidding documents. We have divided that into two sections. One is preliminary design, which would come back to you after the committee has made comment on it and make a presentation, and then once a design has been set, we would actually then have that same firm do the final bid documents to actually put it out for bid.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Anything from any other staff? Okay, well, as I mentioned, next week, we do not have a work session. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council is January 4. We wish everyone Happy and Merry Everything. We will see you all in 2016 as described. We're going to have an executive session meeting after this meeting, so until next time, everyone, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, and Happy Holidays. We're adjourned.